Well, good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting Whitehall City Council Board on this day, August the twentieth. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Connison.
Present.
Cantor.
Heck.
Present.
President. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent members of council.
A second. I have a motion by Mrs. Elmore and a second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent members. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Next, we have the approval of minutes for August sixth, two thousand nineteen, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the August sixth minutes. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Connison and a second by Ms. Heck for approval of the amendments. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes. Heck. Yes.
Minutes have been approved. And now we have, this is our first opportunity for poll public. Anybody wishing to come forward, you can do so now. That brings us to Standing Committee Reports, and Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet next week on the twenty-seventh, sometime after six-thirty. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy did meet on Tuesday. We don't have any pending legislation or drafts. We will meet again next Tuesday in the back about six-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last week. Our minutes are on file. We've got a public hearing before us this evening, and I think a couple other things. We'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six-thirty in the backyard.
Economic Development, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development, last Tuesday as well, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after six-thirty in the back.
Okay. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday, and we have no drafts or pending legislation. Our minutes are on file. We will meet next Tuesday after six-thirty in the back.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back sometime after six-thirty on Tuesday.
Very good. Parks and Recreation also met last Tuesday, and Chairperson Cantor can't be here tonight. He shared a lot of things that the parks are doing this year and have planned, and it's pretty exciting. They will meet again next Tuesday, and our minutes are on file. That brings us to our officials' reports, and we'll start off tonight with Mayor Mager.
Good evening. I'd like to have favorable consideration on Resolution thirty-six and also on Ordinance ninety-two, and I would also like to remind everyone that the sales trailer for the Community Park YMCA is now open, and the hours for the sales trailer is posted on the Community Park YMCA Facebook page, and I would invite everyone to consider joining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to our City Attorney, Michael T. Dibbins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I do have to report, for the month of July, in Whitehall Mayor's Court, we prosecuted two-hundred-and-sixty-four cases. Out of those two-hundred-and-sixty-four cases, thirty of those were of a criminal nature, committed by Whitehall residents, which is an eleven percent. So, we're still in that bubble between eleven to twelve percent of all crimes committed in Whitehall are by Whitehall residents, which shows you the vast number of the others are non-Whitehall residents, so I just wanted to make mention of that. And then next, you will notice, under Petitions and Claims, Action Item Number Two, there is a liquor license permit, fifty percent controlling ownership from the Sunoco. I would like council to remember that our office, in collaboration with Columbus City Attorney's Office, was successful in getting the liquor license at that location terminated. So, we're a little confused on how they're coming back with a petition to get a new liquor license for that location, but I do have a call-in to Bill Sperlaza, who was the lead attorney on that case. He is currently looking into that matter, and did escalate all the way to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. So, as soon as I get some information about that, I will report that to council. If necessary, I may have to bring legislation back to you in order to get the approval to go through the process of objecting to that liquor permit.
Thank you, Mike. That brings us to our City Auditor, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, President Trump, I have no official record of what you have in front of you. I would like to have favorable consideration on Ordinances ninety-five to one hundred and Resolution Thirty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our Treasurer, Mr. Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I don't know if you remember or not, but about a month ago or so, I spoke to you all about the lackluster performance of our investment portfolio and how that was tied to the inverted yield curve. Basically, short-term investments are earning at a higher rate than long-term, which is completely backwards. For some strange reason, that is just now making national news, and that's usually a sign, you know, it's a precursor to a recession. The President's economic adviser, Mr. Cutler, was on television over the weekend, and his advice to the people in this country is to just remain optimistic. I find it very hard to remain optimistic, but we've been aware of this condition since January. So, after eight months and no change in that, I, my optimism is serving, and I would say, brace yourselves. And, by the way, Mayor Mager, Katie and I signed up this morning.
I saw that. Way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Following official, officials' reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. The Mayor's Report to Council for July two thousand nineteen, Auditor's Expense Report for July two thousand nineteen, the Auditor's Bank Report for July two thousand nineteen, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Report for July two thousand nineteen, and the Auditor's Revenue Report for July two thousand nineteen. Under Communications, Petitions and Claims, we have a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D-one liquor permit for Pier Eleven Boiling Seafood LLC, DBA Pier Eleven Boiling Seafood, thirty-nine-twenty East Broad Street and Patio, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three. And we have a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of fifty percent ownership of the C-one, C-two liquor permit for Hamilton and Main Sunoco, Inc., DBA Hamilton and Main Sunoco, four-six, forty-six-hundred East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three, to the forty-six-hundred East Main Street Incorporated, forty-six-hundred East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three. And then we have the Agenda for the August first, two thousand nineteen, Planning Commission Meeting, the Agenda for the August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Park and Recreation Commission Meeting, the Minutes for the July tenth, two thousand nineteen, Park and Recreation Meeting. At this time, I believe we're to have a public hearing on Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen, and it's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on a portion of property located on four-oh-two North Hamilton Road, parcel numbers zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-nine-eight, zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-nine-nine, from Acceptance District, EU, to General Commerce District, GCD, property owned by the city of Whitehall. So, at this time, if there are any proponents or people that want to speak in favor of Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen, may do so now. Are there any opponents or wishing to speak against Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen? If you have anything you'd like to share, you may come forward and do so now. I will close the public hearing on Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen, and we'll move on to verification of copies. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes. Heck. Yes.
So, that brings us to our third reading on ordinances tonight. We have Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on a portion of property located on four-oh-two North Hamilton Road, parcel numbers zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-nine-eight, zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-nine-nine, from Acceptance District, EU, to General Commerce District, GCD, property owned by the city of Whitehall.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen. Move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes. Heck. Yes.
Ordinance eighty-five, two thousand nineteen has passed. Next, we have Resolution thirty-six, two thousand nineteen. It's authorizing a mayor to execute and deliver a purchase and sale agreement and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to sell approximately one acre of property in the Whitehall Community Park to the Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution thirty-six, two thousand nineteen, and move for the adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Connison and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Resolution thirty-six, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. That's all we have under Third Readings, so we'll move to the Second Reading section. We have the Ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand nineteen, permitting an additional exception from the minimum driveway setback in residential districts where an existing driveway previously encroached on the required setback and where the property owner is merely replacing the existing driveway. Ordinance eighty-eight, two thousand nineteen is being read by title only. That's all we have in the Second Reading. In the First Reading, we have the Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen, authorizing the creation of the Recreation Center Fund, three-twenty-one, making a fund transfer of four million, one-hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Recreation Center Fund, three-twenty-one, appropriating four million, one-hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the Recreation Center Fund, three-twenty-one, to the recreation expense account and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce the Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Elmore for the introduction and suspension of rules on Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on the Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Elmore for the adoption of Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-two, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-three, two thousand nineteen, making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of two-hundred-and-two-thousand-eighty-four dollars and three cents from unappropriated monies in the general fund, one-oh-one, to the debt service fund, four-oh-one, making a supplemental appropriation of two-hundred-and-two-thousand-eighty-four dollars and three cents from the debt service fund to the debt service expense account and declaring emergency. Ordinance ninety-three, two thousand nineteen is being read by title only. Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand nineteen, is approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-one-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents from unappropriated monies in the WMPITIE fund, two-seventy-nine, to the debt service fund, four-oh-one, and attributing it to various accounts in the WMPITIE fund, two-seventy-nine, making a supplemental appropriation of three-hundred-and-two-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents from the debt service fund, four-oh-one, to the debt service expense account and declaring emergency. Ordinance ninety-four, two thousand nineteen is being read by title only. Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen, is approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund, one-oh-one, to the income tax refunds expense account and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for introduction and suspension of the rules on Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for adoption of Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? I forgot to ask you. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-five, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen, approving and making supplemental appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, two-forty-one, to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund set-aside account and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for introduction of Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen, and suspension of all rules. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for introduction and for adoption of Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-six, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen, is approving and making supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the Plumbing Permits Fund, eight-fifty-one, to the Plumbing Permits Account, eight-fifty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of rules on Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Heck for the adoption of Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-seven, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen, creating the Etna Road Incentive Expense Account, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars, twenty-five cents, from the Tax Increment Financing Fund, two-seventy-nine, to various expense accounts in the two-seventy-nine fund, and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the fees, fee payments attributed to each TIP in the total amount of seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars and twenty-five cents to the TIP fees account and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction of and suspension of rules on Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen, is making and approving and making a supplemental appropriation of three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents from unappropriated monies in the WMPITIE fund, two-seventy-nine, to various accounts in the WMPITIE fund, two-seventy-nine, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Elmore for introduction and suspension on of all rules on Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Elmore for the adoption of Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen, is unappropriating six-thousand, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and one cent from the TIP fees expense account and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mrs. Connison for the adoption of Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance one-hundred, two thousand nineteen has been adopted. Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen, is resolving to approve, then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution nine, two thousand nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of the rules on Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Aug, would you please call the roll?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Heck.
Upstaying.
Rules have been suspended on Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second.[1576.62] Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for the adoption of Resolution 39, 2019. Ms. Og, would you please call the roll?
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?